If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance. Take the roll call. Every council member is present. We can move on to approving the city council minutes from January 7th, 2019.
Mayor Johnson, we have to...
You are correct on, I'm very sorry.
Not a problem. Mayor Johnson, the city council, we do have the den of the agenda tonight. And that is actually delete J-3, 2019, city council goal setting meeting. A request from staff, a review of day staff will be able to make that meeting. And then to add a new J-4, animal control services, because of the current situation with the provider. Those are the denoms, your honors.
Make a motion to accept the agenda with changes.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin. Do it accepted as is, and second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Therefore, I'd like to move to approve the city council minutes from January 7th, 2017.
Motion for approval.
I got a motion to approve from Lundin and second by Collison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Announcement, city offices are closed Monday, January 21st, 2019, in observation of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Parking Recreation Culture Board meeting Tuesday, January 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. A city council goal setting session at Tuesday, January 29th, at 5:00 p.m. And a city council meeting Tuesday, February 5th, at 7:00 p.m. Immediately following will be an EDA meeting, Tuesday, January 5th, as well. Any council committee reports?
I'd like to withdraw my name from the, as a fire department alternate.
Okay, and you're gonna...
I nominate you, I nominate Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman Burgley.
Mayor Johnson, the city council, that will be discussed...
That is on the agenda, actually.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Burgley. Moving on, there's no public hearings or anything, let's move on to business items. Which is the city administrator, Don Lawrence. I'm sorry, Larson. Sorry. And the city administrator transition, Resolution 2019, approval of contract of city administrator position.
Mayor Johnson, city council, there are two contracts in front of you tonight. First contract is for Ms. Josie Wood, the city administrator. Second contract is for myself to continue on with the city as assistant city administrator, special projects.
One motion for both, or one motion for...
They are separate items, so we can first go off of J-1A, which is for the Josie Wood and the city administrator position. Want to start there? They are separate.
I make a motion, go ahead with that. J-1A. For Josie Wood, city administrator position.
I have a motion to approve J-1A, the city administrator Josie Woods. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion. Sorry, Councilman. Collison, I didn't say it was made by you. Second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor say aye.
I have a question, kind of discussion before we make, before we vote on it.
Yes, discussion can be held.
Clark, if we have any discussion or negotiations with these contracts, would now be the appropriate time? Or would we have to do it at a separate time? I just don't see it being appropriate to have negotiation discussions during the open session.
If there are negotiations that would take place, that the council wishes to go that way, that would suggest that you determine how you're going to proceed this evening. If you're not comfortable in proceeding, then you would table the matter and then determine the next steps of the discussion, negotiations with the staff, personnel involved.
Okay, I just find it difficult, as a council member, that we haven't negotiated these contracts as the councils are whole with these department heads. Not saying that I don't necessarily agree with this contract or disagree with it. I just think there needs to be, there's some fine tuning that may need to be done. And there's more work that needs to be done versus just rubber stamping them. So I, we're high dollar on contracts, and I think they need to be looked at, mind your own.
There was a meeting and discussion with Mayor Johnson, but correctly had not gone to committee of the hold. As per direction of council, the last meeting was to bring it here. But there was some discussion with the council being just Mayor Johnson.
Mayor Johnson, council, Josie is correct, and the resolution of the doctor last meeting was to bring the contracts directly to the council.
Which only three members were present.
Correct.
So what would be the purpose of the fine tuning, I guess? What don't you, is there specific things you don't like, or?
I don't think right now is the appropriate time to discuss it in an open session.
Okay.
I think we're opening ourselves into illegal liability at that point.
I think we came close with the last meeting, but... That's okay.
You're referring to the committee of the hold, Councilman Burgley?
Yeah.
And I asked, I talked, I spoke with Clark before the meeting. He wasn't sure if we could move it to a closed session or if it was appropriate to have contract negotiations in an open session. He said he would need to look at it further. So, his recommendation would be to deal with it until that be decided. But if you guys want to move it forward, I'm the only one voting, so.
Well, I want to, Mayor Johnson, you were on the negotiating here, what's your opinion of all this?
After looking over the contracts, I will agree with Councilman Lawrence that it shouldn't be that a city administrator makes the same as essentially the city administrator, that's why today, we actually sat down and revised that with numbers that this council has all received. The assistant is not making the same now as the city administrator. There's, there is a severance in there, which is the same as the assistant would make, as well as the city administrator would make. I mean, going any further into it, I'm kind of hesitant, because... You know, Clark, Mr. Johnson's been brought into this, and I don't know, Mr. Johnson, if we could go into detail in an open session, or go into detail as far as these contracts go. I personally, after having the numbers skewed, and those figures are in front of every one of you, I don't see an issue with it. But again, I, maybe we should have Mr. Johnson present, and if that would make a few council members a little more comfortable, I would entertain that most definitely.
I'm certainly not uncomfortable with it, the only reason I would want to table it is just to... First of all, I want to know who would be on the negotiating team, and second of all, you know, I guess I would want to... Interview staff myself and just see what their opinion on, on... On the committee of the open meeting, or whatever we call that, what's that committee called, you're doing?
Committee of the Hall.
Committee of the Hall, there we go.
Just bring these contracts to a closed session, so we can discuss them in a closed session, and discuss the potatoes of the contracts and clear out where they, where they fall.
If we're gonna do that, I would do it right here, and now.
Okay, we'll do that, Clark.
Uh, the objection from the employees of doing that.
No.
Therefore, I would ask everybody in the room to please exit.
But you're gonna do one at a time, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct.
No.
You guys are okay with us talking about it in an open session?
You're okay with talking, okay. Then, Mr. Lawrence, are you on the floor, sir?
All right. The concerns I have on Josie, your, your contract. You have the max vacation at 15-plus years. Plus, we're given, you were giving, we had the administration pay, administrative pay, which is kind of comp-ish, right?
Administ, administrative pay was brought in when comp was dissolved, to all salary employees.
So, how does that work?
At the beginning of the year, all salaried employees are given 48 hours of administrative leave time to use, similar to vacation upon approval of their department head. If they're not a department head or a city administrator, if they are not used by the end of the year, they go away.
Okay. So we, we give you 15-plus years vacation, which is, I have it written down here, sorry. Which is 216 hours a year, plus the admin hours, plus a flex schedule. And I, and I know, none of this was a surprise to me by any means, because I had these discussions with you. But when I read through it and put it all together, that was the one thing that just kind of stood out to me. Is it seemed a lot. And it seems like, okay, now we're going to give the, and if administration, I know we've had this discussion that comp might come back, so if the administration pay turns into a comp in the future, then we have that annual to deal with too, which seems like a lot of time off. And, and only discuss the work, the work-life balance, but we also need to make sure the job's getting done.
For sure, I'll address that. Well, for one, there's multiple things in there. For one, if work comp did come back theoretically, administrative leave time would go away. You would not have both, just to make that clear, okay? I do fully support for all of my staff to have a very good, positive home-work balance, because it makes for better productive workers, longer-termed workers for longevity. And we can go into that, a whole different conversation of what I think it is to keep employees around longer, and how that benefits the city financially. In terms of adding all that vacation together, my role as the city administrator will be to make sure that the needs of the cities are, is put ahead of pretty much every other thing in my life, besides my family, and maybe one other thing that, you know. But, vacation goes away as well. If you do not use your vacation on your anniversary day plus 48 hours, it does go away. So it doesn't continually roll over to where there'd be this huge bank of vacation built up. If I'm not able to use vacation due to things that are going on in the city, whether it be staff issues, or should it be emergency issues that just take up more time, that is, that it will be my priority.
And we do extend it for that, for those reasons too, right?
The sixth month?
No, vacation, like we extended for the chief this year.
You do, council has to approve it, and take into consideration what extra circumstances took into, to take into consideration before they are extended. Correct, they are able to per our personal policy.
My only other concern is, and we talked about this, is the car allowance. And you take your salary after the transition. If we took your salary after the transition, and then, what your salary isn't here, minus the car allowance, is still a pretty good raise. Four, four or five thousand dollar raise, I believe, correct?
Um...
116 something right now?
Currently, my pay is 116. And I don't know if I have it with, but I do have it with.
Mike, if you could touch base on that too, that would be appreciated.
Currently, my pay, I have the resolution from 2018, Resolution 063. My pay is 1,116, 581.73 cents, as of January 1st.
So my only other thought is, if we're okay with the 120,000, or I'm fine with that, my only other thought is, I don't like the car allowance. I would either rather roll the car allowance into her salary, or just take the car allowance away and use the 120 as a raise. If we want the whole, this whole package as her salary, I personally would rather put the car allowance as her salary. So it's not hidden.
Yep. Also, I think one thing...
And the, the, I'm sorry, to interrupt, the reason we used, we've done that, those allowances before, was because car allowances don't affect pay equity. So, we, with Josie in this position, her, her, that being her salary, we need to pay it, shouldn't be a pay equity issue.
The only thing I can see is, is the car allowance, she driving her personal vehicle for, we're gonna say, where are you for company usage? If she got in an accident, we could have a liability issue for driving her own personal vehicle for city business.
Can we have vehicles then, for the loss of her?
I mean, that's the, that's the only thing I can say in part, I suppose you can answer that better than I can. But I have known that's been, no one, if she got in a car accident, her car got hurt. We could end up in a nightmare.
Uh, the insurance issue, whether she's choosing to use her own automobile as compensated by, by the automobile allowance. There'd be her automobile insurance and the city's insurance. And those insurance companies will have to determine who was responsible for what part of the coverage. That would be covered up to the policy limits of each, um, insurance companies will have to determine which company based on circumstance was responsible for what losses or liability.
It is no idea, I mean, if she's going into company business, that'd prefer to be known as, she is with the city, I mean, we do have company vehicles here, city vehicle here for the use.
What if it was an emergency situation, do we even start to run, run the city hall and grab that car, and go to where she needs to be, typically? When other places do this, you either give her, give the employee a company car, or you give her car allowance. Usually it's cheaper for that employer to do the car allowance than it is to lighten up the company here.
That is what I found as well, in looking in things. It does say on the wear and tear, you don't have to have to worry about, sorry, settle. You don't need to worry about having to make sure that other staff are coordinating with what staff you, or what cars you need to take, or, you don't have, we wouldn't want to add another car to the fleet. Those are just considerations to think of.
And the car allowance was approved in, that has been in Mr. Lawrence's contract. Basically, I think from the, from the beginning of this employment, the city.
So, Councilman Lawrence, you're proposing, if you were to put that into her salary, you're proposing to give her 124,000?
Well, there's two options. Either her current salary is the 116, so you can just take with it, you take away the car allowance and have her at the 120. And I can't find the exact dollar, what it was in here offhand.
Car allowance is 350.
No, the car allowance is 4200, 350, but I can't find the, her salary right now.
Just 120.
120 something, so. Because, what my thought was, when I did the math, is her current salary plus the car allowance equals the 120. That's what my current train of thought is. If the council wants to give her the 120 and the car allowance, then it would be 124.
Be 124, 5, something, 95, 15.
Yep.
This is where I would...
Otherwise, I can find the rest of the contract.
This is where I would ask Mike, I know, Councilman Lawrence, that you've checked the numbers, but I would just double check those, would you mind?
Yeah, we're, we're rounding the numbers, but I think everybody's on the right page for what steps we're talking about in the total dollar amount of the car allowance.
What is the advantage for the city, and what's the advantage for Josie for doing it one way or the other? Is there an advantage, or?
For the car allowance?
Yep.
And I guess it doesn't really matter either way, I mean, she gave her one or...
The, the advantage for the city when Don was the city administrator was, it didn't, it would lower his annual salary and give him some extra money, so that there wouldn't have been a pay equity issue in there, because Don's a man. Pay equity is a gender imbalance, which the state requires you to make sure all your employees stay within the equal pay. Make sure women are paid equally, they're meant. With Josie being female, her pay being higher shouldn't affect that pay equity issue. So I'd just rather just call state a state, or give her the money, give her the money.
Pre-taxed?
It would be taxed, just like any other income.
It'd be taxed, but...
But if she gets the allowance every month?
No, that's still, that's still taxed.
Mayor Johnson, city council, that's still taxed.
It doesn't really matter how you say it, I mean...
Yes.
I, I make a motion, we'll do the, do the motion again. Give her the, what the salary was based at, but adding on...
Him, adding anything?
Adding the 4200 on for her car use, so that it's just all as her salary base, so we'd bring it to 124, 595, 15, and that's what the numbers come to.
596, 15.
Okay, I have a motion to add the car allowance into Josie's salary.
I'll second it.
And a second by Lawrence, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes, now we'll move on to item J-1B, Resolution 2019, approving contract for assistant administrator in the special projects position. Don?
Mayor Johnson, city council. I consider this a great opportunity to consider serving the city, the update of the conference of plan. We do an update of city codes that is needed, it's over a year since we had original adoption of the city codes. Our conference of plan 2000, the last conference of plan effort, as well as having been evolved and development of the city codes from city ordinances. Assistant, update city policies, et cetera, et cetera. Assist with the orientation of new creative development director, also working in term with former community director at the time. Assistant city administrator and administration is needed with various others. So I, I consider this a great opportunity and honored to continue serving the city. Thank you.
Knowing, uh, council member Lawrence, we had some debate on this.
The issues I have with this is the severance benefit, there's a severance clause in here that says we have to pay Don six months, if we decide to terminate his employment at any time without cause, we have to pay him six months of the salary, which is equal to 82,283 dollars if you're under the mandate. I don't agree with that, I don't think it should be in there. I think the contract, the contract's a two-year contract, it was originally, and what all my understanding was, it was supposed to be a one-year deal. The original comp plan that we originally did in 2008, we have always estimated that being a lot of hundred thousand dollar worth of value in 2006 to 2008, dollars, now inflated. Don's job was going to be updating the comp plan and updating our code, city code. And with his, with his salary that, with the salary that is proposed, that would have pretty much been a work, a work-wide deal, a year plan, not a two-year plan. And then with this severance package of a six-month, of a six-month termination clause that could extend out to possibly two and a half years, possibly. All the committees, the committee, or not committees, but the training and city administrator and stuff that costs, and you bought another 42, 43, 42, or, I'm sorry, 4300 dollars. I don't think that's all that necessary. That's pretty much all about it, I think, just that it should be a one-year contract without that severance clause. And then the extra training, I think, um, whatever training is approved by council, just like any other employee. The other thing to note about that severance clause is, no other employee in our city has that clause, except the city administrator. Josie Wood pointed it out to me, that, that severance clause is, is in as for city administrator for a reason, if all of a sudden the new council comes in and wants to wipe out all the city staff, all the department heads, gives the city administrator something of, you know, so that their jobs just wiped out, it gives them something to go start planning on with. It is very common in city government to give your city administrator that severance clause. However, it's not common in any non-union position to give anybody any other severance clause except for unemployed. So, that's where I stand on that, I think it should be one-year contract with severance and training, here we take this 4200 bucks. Necessary thing, but those two things are extremely important, it's a huge, huge liability, this contract. With the severance package of being unfunded vacation, sick, administration pay along with its benefits, it's worth 270,000, 581.74 cents. And minus the 82,000 for the severance unfunded mandate, and you multiply that by two, two and a half years, that's a lot of money that the city's gonna be able to afford. That I don't think we can afford.
Mayor Johnson, city council, in my discussion with council passed, and I, I think it's been no secret that I was looking at retiring in 2020. My hope was retire at mid-year in 2020, I had the discussion with the council, they've known that. I think this is a unique, one-time type position. If, don't anticipate it'll be continued beyond my tenure here with the city. And I'm just asking for the same contract provisions that I've had since I've served the city, the six-year severance.
Six months.
Pardon me, six months severance. End of speaker.
Mike, one other question, what happens if the comp plan and the code update all get done? What happens with pay equity?
Well, I think it would be a tall order to finish that in anything less than a year. And the farther we go into the year before we get this underway, I think that's difficult. Yeah, that is something the council will need to consider, is that if, if the scope of work as identified in this contract were to change, yeah, the council may need to come back and reconsider what the appropriate compensation is, as that scope of work would change, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I propose that we move ahead with it, instead of, the only thing I would change is, instead of December 31st, 2020, I would move it to June 31st, 2020.
I agree, I was gonna say the same thing, so.
I accept that. So I, you would need a motion?
A motion?
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Collison and a second, Lee Burgley.
And that's changing the pay to the 115 something or other that we talked about at the committee as a whole, correct? Not the 120.
I think you were just going with the length of the contract.
Mayor Johnson, council, it changes the contract to end in June 30th of 2020.
Correct, so everything would stay as is, the only thing we're doing is shortening the contract to June of 2020.
Except for you have the new resolution ahead of you that has the pace points in that, pay that salary, willing to be reflected.
Yes, I have a lot of things in front of me, so just wanted to make sure.
With the, the new, with...
With the new salary, so, we still have a motion by Collison and a second by Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'm the aye, aye, opposed.
Let's make that three to one.
Four to one.
Four to one, I'm sorry, motion carries, four to one. I don't.
And just to be clear, as of right now, Josie Wood is ours to human administrator, correct?
That is correct.
It becomes effective tomorrow.
It'll be effective tomorrow morning at eight-thirty AM?
We could make it.
Okay, let's make it eight, let's make it midnight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes, very good, surely.
Thank you, Mayor Council, I do feel it is a huge honor to be able to continue to serve the city, I've been here for five years. It's been fantastic, I honestly love working with every resident that we have that I've come in contact with. And I look forward to it continuing, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations, Don.
Congratulations, Don, your position.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much, you, thank you.
You've served the city well.
Indeed. Moving on to item number J two, appointments to committees and boards. We did have two of them that we tabled, uh, last council meeting, which I believe was icicle and fire board, correct?
Mayor Johnson, City Council, yes, so it was icicle had a second, uh, would be second alternate, I guess, to the fire board. Thank you.
I will relinquish my position as requested by the mayor. He gave me the choice, I appreciate that, but I will relinquish it.
I appreciate it, Mr. Burgley. So we're gonna have Lundine and myself on that board now. And then for icicle, I do have a question on that one.
And I will comment on it too, so, go ahead.
I do have a question on that one, because I know, I, I looked back and you were on that board. However, I don't know that you attended any of those meetings.
Oh, that's not true, I did attend the beginning, but the council decided that we didn't longer want to give car, I don't think we remember that. Is it already, are we?
The one we took the action on was the chunk highway sixty-five north committee, the, get off of that. Staff, staff was not to attend icicle anymore, I think you were given the option whether you wanted to attend or not.
Yeah, because I think as a council, we decided icicle was very apparently worthless.
And that's what Sean Sullivan, I think, was the recommending body of that, and so worthless icicle was.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying I'm not willing to go, it was just, it didn't seem like we had, it had, it had much value.
It didn't seem like it was going anywhere.
Right, and city administrator Lawrence came to a lot of meetings too. What was your, what I tried to say, something, just didn't come out, I know, I don't know if you realize me, but. What, do you have an opinion on that?
Pretty close.
Well, we, we were concerned about the, about the projects that they were working on at the time, they are meeting four times this coming year. We could reengage with them, and then you can make a decision whether it feels worthwhile or not.
That's what I would ask, is let's try to reengage, and then if we feel that it's not necessary after.
I can report back, do we know when those meetings are?
Yes, we do, they'll be meeting on, on Mondays, on January twenty-eighth, April eighth, uh, July eighth, and October fourteenth. At noon.
At, at noon?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll attend the first meeting, if everybody.
Don, can you say them dates one more time, please?
Yes, uh, January twenty-eighth, April eighth, July eighth, and October fourteenth. And they'll be at various locations, each entity kind of holds it, it could be at county, it could be at county, it could be at brand.
My next concern on that, Mr. Burgley, is if we're gonna send you to, um, do we appoint an administrator to go with you?
There's been times where they have, and there's times where they haven't, I mean.
Do we feel as, as the administrators, do we need? I mean, look this way to my city administrator now, yeah.
Oh, that's not that time yet, no, I'm sorry.
My, my recommendation would be that, that, you know, that, that probably, uh, Councilor Burgley and administrator Wood uh, attend the first meeting, and then they can come back and give you a report of what they think.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Take note for me.
Uh, Miss Wood.
Take, take note for me.
Miss Wood needs to drive too, by the way.
Mayor, Mayor Johnson, uh, City Council, yes, we're looking to fill those two seats on those coods.
Okay, um, Councilman Lawrence, do you have a few questions?
Just being I wasn't here and I was all the state in training at work last week, um, just wondering why I wasn't entertained with any committee assignments?
They were actually this, left the same as we had them before, the only thing that we changed was the fire district, I asked for that to be changed.
Well, nothing was really left the same, because we eliminated every committee that I sat on, it wasn't eliminated. We, because of the committee of the whole.
I think that's pretty much everybody.
Yeah, that was everybody though.
I mean, I was in icicle, which I wasn't going to.
Least among the committees than out of any council member, than I asked to be on, I think, two committees.
That are still in place?
Yeah, like Sandy County, um, like a Sandy County, and this Sandy, so knowing, I, the favorite of Sandy by Glock, you know. I don't care if you wanna attend with me.
Absolutely.
If we can do that, Clark, don't, can I have two people, maybe outside of the city council, can we? Outside of the city, can we have two people?
If they're announced meetings, and they're open meetings, which I understand in, in those situations, they are, they're open meetings, and they're scheduled regularly like that.
Okay.
Then we'll, we'll alternate coffee, as that thing.
Yeah, I just, that's just something that I, I have an interest in, like in this county, if these trails develop, so, um, that's why I had an interest in it, so.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, there, there is, do you want a dual appointment then to those committees? Because there'd be both, if you both attended, you'd need to be compensated for that.
Uh, yes, I would, I don't care either, but I guess if we need to make a motion to do so, then I would ask for a dual.
I can motion, they accept it, move forward.
I have a motion to approve this by Lundine, and a second by Burgley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll poll, same sign.
J four.
Now we'll move on to item J four, the resolution approving especially event request for the twenty nineteen downtown street dance.
Yeah.
That's, oh, I am sorry.
Mayor Johnson, um, City Council, we did the, really addendum that things got, got moved, but, um, yes, the next one would be especially the request for twenty nineteen downtown street dances, that's J three. Just if you're, if you're remembering, because we.
Deleted three?
Yeah, I, I, I still have three on my packet, sorry. Well, four became three, was we deleted the city council goal setting meeting, so sorry if it wasn't clear on that.
So essentially, J three is going to be the, uh, the downtown street dance.
Yes.
Okay, so correction, J three will be the twenty nineteen approval for a special event request for twenty nineteen downtown street dance.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lundine to approve, second by Lawrence, are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll poll, same sign. Two characters. Um, which we are now labeling J four, which would be the request for, uh, city council action on the animal control services.
Mayor Johnson, City Council, the city was informed that our current animal control and kennel vendor, Linda Branson, has acquired and has lost her interim use permit with Athens Township and her state license for her own kennel. She's in the process of trying to get those approvals back. Um, and this has been confirmed by our police chief, Gene Hill, at the, at, with Athens Township. Um, therefore, our vendor's not in compliance with the contract with the city, and the city needs to provide those services. Our chief now has contacted two providers, uh, one that are closest to us, and procured a quote, to provide these services on a temporary basis, so a permanent vendor can be contracted with. So the recommendation, uh, we did get one quote back from online retrievers from Old B. They provide animal control services for the city of Bram for Sandy County. Uh, service to be provided to a new permanent provider is approved, we still go out now and try and get, get a, get a three-year contract with a, um, with a provider that has a proper licensing and facility. And then, um, this would be interim until that happens, or a hundred and twenty days. And resolutions for both, uh, the termination of services with White Oaks Kennel and approval of the temporary services with online retrievers are attached to your consideration.
Motion to approve.
Both? Second.
I have a motion to approve both by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Lundine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll poll, same sign. Motion carries, moving on to approving the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Burgley to approve, a second by Lundine, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And I have a motion to adjourn by Burgley, and a second by Lundine, we stand adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Mayor Council, we will reset the planning commission today.